So, okay, I call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, public forum. Please note that each person will have up to two minutes to speak at the public forum. Please start by stating your name and address. Recognizing that there may be people at the meeting in person and participating remotely who would like to speak, we'll go to the room first. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Perfect. No? Okay. Ben, anyone on Zoom? All right.
So I think it would be, this would be a good time to mention, I hate to be that guy that's always mentioning these, but we lost Mrs. Duffy. Mary Jo Duffy passed away on Friday. She was a, Dr. Duffy's wife. She had 2,000 kids, I think. A wonderful, wonderful person. I was very fortunate, and I know that this is not breaking any HIPAA laws because I've been told it was okay. She was my patient as a nurse for the last three years, four years, and just a heck of a, a heck of a woman, and one of these, one of these longtime townie people that when we lose, we don't get back, and we lose some history, and we lose a lot of stories and a lot of identity through the town. So she will be missed. She was a wonderful person, and Godspeed, Mrs. D. I will get no more popsicles from her.
Can I just add?
Along those lines, go ahead, Mary.
I'm sorry. So I met Mrs. Duffy when I was a young mom in town, and she called me for help. I used to volunteer helping young moms, and either one of her daughters or daughter-in-laws or someone she knew needed some help. And I was actually really sick at the time. So I said, "I'm really sorry, but I just can't." I had pneumonia, and I had a newborn myself. And I connected her to somebody else to get her, whoever it was, some help. And then she said, "Now what can I do for you?" And she brought a big bucket of soup and spaghetti sauce over for me and my kids. And we, you know, we knew each other, but hardly knew each other, and returned her offer of help from me with help to me, and it was really, really lovely.
That's a great story.
A great story.
I knew Mary Jo Duffy for many, many years, and we always had, she had a great sense of humor, and I loved it. And we always had a running joke about being the two Mary Joes in town, because there is another one now, and there were a couple in between, but she was the older, and I was the younger. And always at Carbone's, or whenever we were out, or I was over because of an issue with John and the Board of Assessors. She was just wonderful, very gracious, and really terrific women. And she let John be on the board of selection back in the day. And then he was on the Board of Assessors and a bunch of other things. And when you get eight kids, it's hard, so.
More than eight.
Huh?
More than eight.
Or should it be 12?
They adopted a few, too.
Yep.
So we're going to miss her. The whole town is going to miss her, all the Duffys.
Thank you. Thanks. It's important that we remember people who have contributed to our town. And similarly, we also lost Frank Durso, former planning board member. We put a lot of, a lot of his time and effort into this town, and he'll be sorely missed.
I agree. Town meeting's not going to be the same without him.
You might move a little quicker.
You know, when I read the little write-up about Frank, I didn't realize he had been involved almost like 25 years in town. So you know, you forget how much individuals, certain individuals, put into this town, and we're so much better for everybody's contributions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I hope we've missed a lot.
So moving on, the consent agenda is the next item. Board will consider approving the consent agenda consisting of approving the minutes of the November 9, 2021, meeting and November 16, 2021, meetings.
I move to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All right, your motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. I think we're a little early for the public hearing.
Do we do Board of Library Trustees' appointment?
Yeah, let's do that. So the Board will consider holding a, oh, do we have a library? A joint meeting with the Board of Trustees? We go to the Youth Commission and Town Moderator?
Yep.
Yep.
So the Board will consider making appointments to the Youth Commission and appointing a Town Moderator. The Board will start with the Youth Commission, where there are two applicants for three vacancies.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept Jennifer Reed and Erica Lawrence to the Youth Commission, with Jennifer Reed's term to expire 6/30 of 23, and Erica Lawrence also term to expire 6/30 of 23.
There's one expiring.
Okay, here we go.
Oh, no, there's two expiring in 23.
Two in 23, right, okay.
Okay, so that'll work. And then the last vacancy would be for the one.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a motion been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Thank them for applying.
Yeah, very appreciative of them stepping forward. I'm excited about that.
Especially when we both, when they have such great experience. I think it's fantastic. I think we're blessed to have such applicants. All right, so motion been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Chair, I move to accept Ellen Rutter as Town Moderator, term expiring May 20, 22, Town Election.
Second.
Okay, your motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
So there was somebody else that had initially applied that removed themselves from the, from the process today, so.
So I did want to say, I had an opportunity to talk to Matt, and he was really gracious about it and is looking forward to finding, and you know, you know, it was his decision to pull out, and he's looking forward to finding a way to participate. And we are sure, sure looking forward to that happening, so.
Well, I think without Ellen moving into the Town Moderator role, then we will have an opening for a vacancy for a deputy.
Yeah, it's important to have deputies in case the moderator does move or something like this.
Exactly.
And then we can have someone else ready, so.
All right. So motion's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Can I just say it's pretty exciting, too? First woman moderator in the town of Hopkinton.
That's awesome.
Ooh, I'm very excited about that.
Well, I'm excited just seeing how she conducted herself. Come on, step up. You're here, you're on.
Yeah, well, congratulations, we already appointed you.
You've already been appointed. We're all just saying that it's fantastic that we have our first woman moderator. And I was about to say that in seeing how you conducted yourself as deputy, I think we're going to have organized orderly meetings. I'm really looking forward to it.
You are up for it, and we really appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Eric, you're going to win.
I just mentioned casually that you're making history in Hopkinton as the first woman moderator, so that's exciting, too.
That's very exciting.
It is exciting.
Pumps. The next, the next person wants pumps. Thank you for reminding me.
Can't leave them out. All right, so it's still a little early for the.
We can do the new appointments.
Yeah, so we'll do the new employees.
Yep.
So Board will consider confirming the Town Manager's appointment of Nancy Hill as the Library Director and Sarah Murphy as the Public Safety Communications Dispatcher.
So Mr. Chair, I would move to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Nancy Hill as the Library Director and Sarah Murphy as Public Safety Communications Dispatcher.
Second.
Your motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand? That passes unanimously.
Are they here? Yeah, they're here? You're the one with them? Okay.
They have a sickly already. They got a good union.
Okay, so we have a public hearing in one minute. Two minutes.
What else have we got? Any other reports?
I just, okay, I just wanted to say, over the weekend. Over the weekend, the attendance on the Common was very nice. They had a nice sculptor and a beautiful host drone carriage riding around all day, and, and the Girl Scouts did the carol singing and at the tree lighting. And I also went down to the Historical Society where Janice McIntyre had an exhibit of dolls. There must have been 200 dolls. I don't know how many exactly, but there were four huge trestle tables full of dolls with, with cards that told all about them, and they, they were, it was just amazing. And she had them set up in certain kinds of groups, and it was lovely. And the Historical Society liked it so much that they're going to open it again this Saturday from 9:03, so if anybody missed it last Saturday, please try to make an effort to go this Saturday. It doesn't take long to go through them, but then you can go in the other room and look at the historical Hopkinton things that they have there, and it's, it's a worth take. I want to thank Janice McIntyre for that, along with the girls and the people who put on the Common. It was wonderful.
Awesome, thanks. Anyone else have anything?
I can't, so I attended the Youth Commission last night. Really excited to say that they have reorganized and have a new sense of energy. Very excited about the fact that they were getting two new appointees tonight. They knew that those applications were in front of us. It will, in all likelihood, take them a little while to really get their legs. But Kelly Karp is the new, the new chair, and.
She's awesome.
I apologize, I have dropped the name, but the, the member who was, has been on the longest is the Vice Chair, which is really helpful. Tracy, thank you.
Excellent.
And Eva is the Recording Secretary. So they're in a really good shape. It's a lot of great energy, great camaraderie, and big plans.
Good to see that the dust has settled nicely there. All right, it is 6:45, 6:46, I'm a little late. So we have a public hearing for, a public hearing, Section 15 All Alcohol License for Belladore Co. Doing Business as the Vin Vin at 22 South Street. The Board will consider an application submitted by the Vin Vin for an all alcohol package store license. The Vin Vin currently operates with a wine and malt alcohol license. A new license has become available based on the increase in population for Hopkinton reported in the 2020 census. The request includes expanded hours from the current license. First, we will hear a presentation from the applicant, a report from the staff. Board members may ask questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Do we have, please, come on up.
Yeah.
You're vaccinated, right?
I got my booster today.
Awesome. I need to see the card. Just joking, joking, joking.
Well, good evening. My name is Rick Lombardi. I'm the owner of Belladore Corporation and Vin Vin. We, we ask that the Board consider our application to expand our operation on South Street from beer and wine to beer, wine and spirits. It's something that we had hoped to do for years, where we built the store at the Plaza. We had built it in having liquor in mind. So the store is prepared to expand products. The type of business we run would be very similar to the stores we run in Marlborough and Southborough. So we tend to have products that are more upmarket. We stay away from typical package store activities. We don't sell cigarettes, we don't sell lottery. In fact, we're more of a gourmet market. We put cheese and gourmet items. And we will continue in that vein using the alcohol. We have had requests for full liquor in our store almost daily from our, from the folks coming in, people looking for whatever drinks they want. And unfortunately, we have to send them away to other stores to get what they need. But we see this as a, as a great public convenience by having it. We'd be the only full package store on the west side of town. We would serve that entire neighborhood on the west side of the highway. So it would allow people to do their shopping at the Price Chopper and with us, all contained in one plaza. It cut down on the number of trips they're going to make, and again, just to be more of a convenience for their shopping.
Great. Elaine, staff reports?
Yep. The permitting team didn't identify any issues with this, with this application, including the police department as well, which, who sent an email this evening. In addition, there are no outstanding issues with the current license, and inspections are up to date.
And the, the application materials were all properly submitted?
Everything is in order, yes.
Everything's in order? Great. Board members, any questions?
Yeah, so you have had the, you're the initial proprietor? You're the one that put that in?
Yes.
And a couple of years ago, they had done a whole bunch of stings. How did you fare in those stings? Did you get caught?
So the, for the ABC?
Yep.
So the ABC did catch us. We went to the, went to the ABC Board. They dismissed it with a warning, so there was no penalty. Unfortunately, the person who was at the register at that moment, and it's all coincidence, was not one of our typical registered employees. She actually worked in our cheese counter, although she was tip certified. She was not normally at the register. We reviewed the tape. We went to the ABC, and we told them exactly what happened. Sadly, that employee was dismissed the next day. But we, like you guys, have a zero tolerance policy. Nobody sells alcohol to minors.
Yeah, so I asked that question, and I knew the answer because I was on the Board when that came before us. And I actually, I, it resonated with me, your reactions to what happened. It showed that you did not come up here and say, "Poor me." You did not deflect. You owned it. You did terminate the employee the next day, which, whatever. I mean, that's not a great thing to do, but it's, it's probably something that had to be done. So I appreciate how forthcoming you were, also that you've not had any issues since then. So I find you to be a very above-the-boards business owner.
I appreciate it.
And I like your free cheese.
Must be a conflict of interest somewhere.
Anyone else?
I was just going to add for the public to know that we have a new full liquor license available because of the 2020 census population increase, so we're not losing a different liquor store. But anyway, I think this will be viable for people right near the Price Chopper, so. Sounds good.
Mary Jo?
No, I don't have anything.
Mary?
I mostly know, and I haven't been up there in quite a while. I'm mostly curious if you sell fancy sandwiches like you do in Southborough.
Not yet, right? Not yet.
It's a, we looked at that a few years ago. It's going to be a lot harder than we thought it would be, putting in all the, the commercial kitchen. Huge hill to climb at this point. But we may. We've had a lot of requests for that as well. It's something that we continue to look at. And depending on how well we can do with business over the next couple of years, maybe this is something we'll be able to afford and do.
I bet it's tough with, I mean, you get Price Chopper 300 yards to your right, and then you get the restaurant right next door to you. So I imagine that would be tough, but the sandwiches are so good.
So good.
But we won't even be competitive.
So good.
All right, you're going to need to go to Southborough, I guess.
You've sold more than one bottle of wine to me while I've waited for that sandwich.
How was the staff? And that's, you know, that's of interest to us as well. I just wanted to introduce the manager of the store. It'll be Christina, my daughter. Christina Amato. She's just married into the Amato family in Hopkinton, and she lives right up the street from, from the store.
Very nice.
She's been running the, behind the scenes of our operation for the last several years. So she's fully up to date on what we need to do there.
Great, so I do have one question. Are you, I mean, I've been to your store, and there's, I just wonder, where, where is the alcohol going to be sold? Because it's actually pretty tight.
Good question. When you walk into the store, what we did originally was to have the shelving across from where the beer cooler is on the whole right side, past where the cheese is, to be alcohol. But what we did, we just, we just migrated product into that sort of overstock, just to fill up the shelves. Once we get, if we get the license and we do bring the product in, that product will come back to the, to where the wine shelves are on the left side of the store, and the rest will go over to the scotch in the back, and that whole area will be all liquor.
Which area? I'm sorry, as soon as you enter?
The shelving across from where the beer cooler is.
Okay. So in the, in the rear of the store?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've got surveillance cameras up there with pretty good eyes on that area as well.
Okay, great. Open this up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak? Ben, anyone on Zoom? No? All right, then I'm going to request a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so.
So Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, I would move to approve a 15 package store all alcohol license to the Vin Vin 22 South Street with the following conditions. Hours of operation Sunday 10 a to 6 p. Monday through Saturday 10 a to 10 p.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
That passes unanimously. Congratulations.
You were ready for a fight, weren't you?
Thank you, you, too. All right, so do we have the Board of Library Trustees present?
Did we want to move that other thing first?
Oh, yeah. So we already, we already did that, we appointed her, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But I.
She is here, if you'd like to meet her.
So, yes, so we, we've already appointed the new Library Director, and I believe she is present. So it would be wonderful if we could have a chance to say hello. Nancy Hill? Hi, Nancy. Hello.
Thank you for the formal appointment, and it's a pleasure to meet all of you, and I'm very much looking forward to working with the town of Hopkinton and getting to know the staff and the community. And I hope, I know that we'll be able to do wonderful things together. So thank you.
It's our pleasure. I mean, I think I reviewed your resume, and I was impressed that I feel we're lucky to be able to get you, to come to town.
Just, could I, could I ask? I'm sorry, no, you're fine. I just, for the purposes of the public, if you just want to tell us, tell the public a little bit about yourself, introduce yourself to the folks that listen and so forth, and, and you know, what you're excited about, about coming to Hopkinton.
Sure. So I've worked in public libraries for over 20 years. I started in school libraries and decided that I wanted to move into public libraries, and so I went and got my Master's in Library Science in order to do that. And I think that one of the unique things about me is that I've worked in pretty much every department in a library, worked my radio from young adult services to adult services. I became an Assistant Director in the field. I've been the director in just one third library. And I'm excited about what's happening in libraries today and about the things that we've learned, about how we can serve the public after COVID. And so I think there are new and exciting things on the horizon. I'm excited to be in Hopkinton. I'm really looking forward primarily to getting out more into the community, and that's something that, that your residents are looking for. And so I'm excited about being able to team up with businesses and nonprofits in the town and working with the town to heart.
Wonderful, well, we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine, I have a question for you. For the. Board of Library Trustees' appointment, we would need the remaining members of the, of the library.
For a quorum.
Here, for a quorum, right?
Yeah.
Do we have three?
Waiting for.
Do we have three?
They both are delivering. We're having issues with one is delivering today.
That seems like a good excuse.
They work for Amazon?
Because they deliver babies from Amazon.
Okay. Hey, all right.
All right, good.
All right. So Board of Library Trustees' appointment. The Select Board will hold a joint meeting with the Board of Library Trustees to interview candidates and consider appointing one person to the Board who will serve until the next annual Town Election. So would the remaining members of the Library Trustees care to come up?
Oh, I have Carter.
Hi, should we just go around the table and introduce ourselves?
I'm the Board of, Chair of, Chair of Library Trustees, Jessica McCaffrey.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, great. So we have two candidates, Warren Carter, who has a conflict and is unable to attend, and David Dollmeyer?
Dollmeyer.
Dollmeyer, is he present? Okay. David, you want to come? I think there's one more chair on the side there that we could slide over. Yeah, oh, sorry, yeah. Come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself. Why are you interested in being on the Board of Library Trustees?
I lost a hearing today. It was a pandemic. I should say at the beginning that our son and daughter-in-law are, they have a baby in early February. Our first grandchild.
Congratulations.
Because of that, we're going to be away with, we're running the apartment in Brooklyn where they live for over the months of February, perhaps March, too. So if that's an impediment to fill out this term, then we should take it. I, I, for this, I definitely will be able to participate in Zoom meetings.
We can, we can have you participate by Zoom, by hand, not by quorum.
Ah.
I love the whole meeting in Zoom.
Right, okay.
Is that true? I don't know that. Is it?
But there is. Just one.
Just one.
There are special COVID allowances until April 1st, where everyone can be, the whole board can be removed. But you can do hybrid.
We do, we do joint meeting, I mean, hybrid meetings.
Yeah. Okay, so.
It's, well, everything is, everything is new during COVID.
And it's fluid, that could change.
Right.
April 1st.
Okay. Board members, any questions? I should start with the library.
I guess, why are you interested in becoming a student? What is the law, the law for the last three?
I, so I love books and, and literature, and I, I've used the library a lot, especially interlibrary loan and audio books. And I have been on a previous Board of Trustees' retrestment school in gravity, so I have some experience with that. I'm retired.
And I'm retired, so I thought this would be a way to, with an area that's interesting.
I just want to say, you have an impressive resume. Are you planning to increase the German collection of life?
Is there a German collection? I'm, you know, I would definitely be interested in, you know, words that are translated from German that I think might be good to have a collection. And the collection is something, this sort of physical collection is something that interests me and that I would like to sort of explore more. I mean, my impression of development has been a little thin, but, you know, I'm hoping to correcting that.
One more question, are you selling any of the books in town yet?
No.
Okay, we'll keep going with the Select Board.
So we've had the pleasure of meeting and I thank you for putting, putting your name in. Your resume is ridiculously impressive, certainly. Tell me something that you look forward to, the library is really, is, is one of the only municipal resources that is truly free and open to all. And a lot of, a lot of places are utilizing libraries in very interesting ways beyond books and resources. So can you tell me a little bit about what, you know, you see as the future and what would be exciting at the library?
I was thinking about this and I know already that libraries are sort of challenged and I think that the Hopkinton area is meeting the challenge of presenting digital and online resources as well as just books. I would be interested in seeing the collection mirror the way that our population has changed with a lot of new residents not born in this country and how that's reflected. I like it that, the meetings that I attend in the library are meetings in the Trail Club because I'm a member of the Trail Club.
Nice.
So I really like it that, that sort of thing happens in the library. And I think there's a reciprocal relationship. The Trail Club has, has decided to sort of donate a collection of trail guides and books to the library, so there's, there's a back and forth, there's definitely good things that happen on the both sides of that equation. And I also have a good friend who brings a dog into the library to be a sort of a comfort dog for people who want to hang out with the dog, so I think that's.
That's wonderful.
Wonderful, yeah. I'm interested that the website has a strategic plan for planning this in the following week and basically years when it's run up to the expansion of libraries. Is there an earned strategic plan, you know, works or?
No, we just, we just asked.
And the other question is, is about, I mean, I saw, I looked at the, at the duties of the Board of Trustees and all of those are made complete sense to me, except I think the last one was public relations, so I'm not sure exactly what that means.
Public relations has just been as.
Okay.
At events, being vocal in support of the library. We went back and did, we still have these things, we did Hopkins in one of the trust meetings. We was, Hopkins. And, you know, we just tried because of library functions, programs, they just go to program while we're banned. That kind of, just that.
Now there's a new director. I understand.
Yes, yes.
I assume that now that the library is a town department and no longer any kind of entity, that the director is hired by, by the celebrity, by the Board of Trustees, but the Board of Trustees has input.
We have, yes, we, I mean, talked to the town manager, I was on the panel, the town manager's office tends to try to involve us, too. What gives the town hours?
Anything you need?
I don't think I have any further questions. I've appreciated the dialogue and responses so far and appreciated reading your resume and as well as Mr. Carter's, so thank you.
I think everyone has said it and it can't be emphasized enough how impressive your resume is.
It's really, it's really not that impressive.
It certainly is, it certainly is.
Typical resume for someone who's been teaching for a long time.
Yes, it's an academic.
Kind of typical.
I have no publication, so your long list is impressive.
I know a lot of people who was a teacher that'll say Fermiham State.
A great.
An absolutely wonderful school. It's not Princeton.
It's not Princeton.
Brennan, any?
No, I got nothing. I don't want to look foolish.
Mary?
Well, I have met Mr. Dollmeyer one time before and I was very impressed then and I'm even more impressed since I've seen the whole resume, so I don't really have any questions.
The only thing I would like to suggest to the fellow members of the board is that you don't miss the apple tart. Make sure he brings that to your gatherings.
I was going to bring something up. She wouldn't do it.
So I do want to say, I also read the qualifications of the other applicant, Warren Carter, and I thought he also has a very impressive resume. It would be, it's unfortunate that he doesn't have a chance to be here today to speak with us, but he also has a lot of direct library experience and that was also very impressive. So.
And also he's been a dedicated to the library, gets all these new, a previous location where literature was.
Right.
So, through the chair, I would like to, I would move to appoint Mr. Dollmeyer.
I think we have to do that procedure, right?
What procedure?
When we have a choice.
So before I entertain a motion, I would like to ask each Board member to indicate which candidate they prefer for the position. So, starting with you.
I can leave the room. I think your background and your passion for the library would contribute greatly work. I'd be very happy to have you on. Yeah, I haven't met Mr. Carter very well, but you seem to have longstanding dedication to the library and a pre-graduate resume. I don't know whether we're going to use it, but yeah.
That German collection, Susan.
Yeah, the German.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think I'll see that again. Okay.
Great. Mary up here?
So, Mr. Dollmeyer, with thanks to Mr. Carter for putting his name in and we hope we can use him another way.
I agree. My preference would be Mr. Dollmeyer, but I hope that Mr. Carter will find another, we have other openings, other committees.
My preference would also be Mr. Dollmeyer because he is here and everything that we've just gone through with him, I think he'd be an excellent candidate. Mr. Dollmeyer.
Mr. Dollmeyer for me too, but I do want to say to Mr. Warren Carter, that his resume is wonderful and to please keep his eyes open and, because we always have positions available with the town and we'd like, I'd like to see his resume submitted again for something.
Thank you.
So through the chair, I would move to appoint David Dollmeyer to the Board of Library Trustees to a term expiring at the 2022 annual town election.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Okay, all in favor, does this need to be a roll call vote?
No.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Congratulations.
And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And for Mr. Carter, please keep. Good question. Did they need to open their meeting before we did that?
Susan, did you guys open your meeting?
So why don't we open it and vote again and close again?
He doesn't have.
Sorry, he doesn't need to be here, this is just, thanks.
So we guys all here, everybody?
Yeah.
It's when you get up to this big table.
Call us good or at 7:15 again.
Excellent. Okay, so we had a motion that was seconded.
So I should probably make the motion again since it was not open at that time.
Okay, so why don't we make the motion again?
I move to, let me see, where am I at here? I move to appoint David Dollmeyer to the Board of Library Trustees to a term expiring at the 2022 annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion that's been seconded, hearing no discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
And then just close your meeting.
Okay, thank you. No worries.
No worries, it's on us, too.
All right. I think we are ready for.
Tony, are you ready?
Yeah.
Just find my place here, there we go. Lichen Bioscience. Board will receive an update on the proposed expansion of Lichen Bioscience on South Street and their interest in a tax increment finance or TIF agreement. Is Mr. Kamalow on? Mr. Kamalow?
I'm on, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, to the board and to the public, we have always been looking for beautiful stories about why Hopkinton is a great community. I think what we're going to hear tonight is a beautiful story from Lichen, thinking back to, back when Lichen shot up in Hopkinton, not so soon if they wanted Hopkinton to be a home. What I think with that is that they've since discovered what a wonderful community Hopkinton is and we have tonight, Mike, Thomas, who introduced the Lichen team and then the presentation by Patrick Lucy as well as Matt Thomas. With permission, Mr. Chair, I would like Mr. Matt Thomas to introduce the Lichen team.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Kamalow, and I'd like to thank you for your support to Lichen and to you, Ms. Lazarus, as well, Lazarus, for your support. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Matt Thomas and I would not normally be making this presentation, it would not, would normally be Lynn Takazak from Business Development Strategies. Unfortunately, Lynn's mother is not feeling well and she's elderly and Lynn had to be with her this evening and so she gives her apologies and thanks you all for the support that you've given Lichen and other clients in the past. So as Mr. Kamalow said, we know your time is very tight and you have a lot on your agenda tonight, so Patrick Lucy is going to do most of the presentation. Let me just introduce some members from the Lichen team here. We have Patrick Lucy, who's the president and the CEO. We have Tony Rattuno, who's known to most of you, he's the founder and executive vice chairs, board directors. We have Matt Trean, who is the vice president of corporate facilities. As I mentioned, Lynn Takazak from Business Development Strategies is the government tax incentive consultant. I serve as the tax, the TIF attorney for BDS, so I advise on that. And we also have the property owner, Harold Nahian, with us this evening. So we'd also like to thank the Hopkinton Chamber of Commerce and their economic development chief, Paul Ostender, for their support in this process. So as Mr. Kamalow said, Lichen is an existing company in town. I think you'll hear just how they've grown and how they have actually shown themselves to be very good corporate citizen here in Hopkinton and the future expansion plans. And so with that, I'd like to invite Patrick Lucy to come forward and watch the presentation.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Thank you for, for having us here tonight. And yeah, as Matt said, my name is Patrick Lucy, I'm the president and CEO of Lichen Bioscience based on 97 South Street in Hopkinton. We have, we have been in Hopkinton since 2019, but the two founders behind me, Anthony Rattuno and Matt Trean, Anthony in particular has been part of that site for multiple businesses since back in, I think, 2004. And so I wanted to walk through the slides and look at their project.
Yeah, they're behind you, so we'll be looking.
Oh, great.
All right, there they are.
So we can go to slide two in the interest of time. So Lichen, as I said, founded in 2019 in Hopkinton, is an innovative contract development manufacturing organization. So we're a cell therapy manufacturer. For those of you not in the sciences, cell therapy is a process by which we take patients' own immune cells, we deliver them to the Lichen site, we engineer those cells and deliver them back to the patient to fight the disease they're suffering from. And so we have a range of programs underway at Lichen right now, targeting things such as glioblastoma, rheumatoid arthritis and other, other cancers. We deliver our products, we receive our products from clinics, human clinical trials and hospitals and we deliver them directly back to those hospitals or biopharmaceutical partners. And, and cell therapy is really the, at the forefront of biotechnology today. It is an exploding area of, of the industry and, and the demand that we're seeing is, is really driving us to be here tonight. Go to the next slide. So, so the site we're talking about, so on the top, on the right-hand side of the slide, the top 97 South Street is our current facility, the building right next to it is, is Repligen Corporation. And then the next spot down the street, 103, 105, 107, 109, are all of the addresses of the location that we are, we're considering. So since we, we started the company, earlier this year, we kicked off an internal expansion to add more capacity to the existing facility. So beyond the original investment, we're, we're investing several more million dollars to add manufacturing suites as well as an innovation laboratory in the facility. But we're seeing, we're seeing significant growth. So we're currently looking, doing a site search right now. And one of the aspects of cell therapy that's challenging is logistics, is getting the material from the patient to our site and back to the patient quickly and seamlessly. So there is some discussion around geographic expansion. Should we have something in Europe? Should we have something on the West Coast or should we continue to build here in Hopkinton? And, and one of the arguments for Hopkinton is the fact that there's four international airports within 100 miles of this location, which gives options around shipping and logistics. So we are, you know, our stakeholders are asking us to explore alternatives, but we think critical mass here in Hopkinton is of value to the, to the organization. You can move to the next slide. So the current site we're, we're considering, these are older, older buildings that are on the site right now and, and Mr. Nahian is, is eager to explore opportunities to essentially upgrade the site to a facility. And if some of you have seen the site at, at Lichen, it's a gorgeous facility both inside and out. And so state of the art construction and, and really aesthetically pleasing. And so we think there's an opportunity here, not only for increased taxes, but also the, these facilities would be upgraded and be, you know, 2021 facility. Next slide. So the proposed project is, is to demolish those, those existing buildings that you just saw in the previous slide. And, and again, Mr. Nahian is, is prepared to take that on as the landowner. We're currently contemplating about 112,000 square foot facility and this would be, and this is an error on the slide, but this would be for both clinical and commercial manufacturing. So, so these, when these products progress through FDA approval, the current facility and this future facility can, can support both clinical and commercial supply, so they're regulatory compliant to, to support that. We're estimating about $110 million spent. Mr. Nahian is prepared to, to invest about $40 million in demolishing the current facility, doing some, a lot of civil engineering. in demolishing the current facility, doing some, a lot of civil engineering and creating a shell. And the Lichens prepare to invest approximately $50, $40, $50 million in kitting out the walls, ceilings, et cetera, floors, and then about $20 million of capital that would go into these production suites. This, just to be clear, this is a very rough number. This is all conceptual, and so we would update these numbers as we progress. But this is in the ballpark of what we're, what we're talking about. Next slide. So the new facility would create approximately 125 permanent full-time jobs. And these are ranging engineering, lab techs, manufacturing operators, quality control. Our current business, our current facility, the demographics for, in terms of educational level, range quite nicely, actually. About 25% have high school slash GED degrees, about 50% of bachelor's degrees. Single-digit percent are associate's degrees or doctorate degrees, and about 20-ish percent is master's degree. So it really runs the, runs the gamut. And in this environment in particular, would bring significant competitive salaries and benefits. So we're thinking these, these jobs will average an annual salary of about $90,000 a year. So these are definitely valuable jobs and really... With Repiligen on the site, you start to, start to feel a little bit more of a biotech environment with Lake Pharma at the end of the street, Lichen in two locations, and Repiligen in the middle, and maybe others joining. It really starts to become a biotech-centric location, which is attractive to us. Next slide. In reviewing, and I had joined the company about a year ago, so I wasn't here the last time when Tony and his team presented to the town. But as, in reviewing the previous TIF agreement, there was a lot of obligations in that agreement that we needed to fulfill. And I'm happy to report that we are in full compliance with that agreement. And we've really, as part of the corporate culture at Lichen, we definitely are a community-centric organization. And we do that really for multiple reasons. I think it's really healthy for the organization to be part of the community. We also do it for our own benefit in terms of encouraging people to come to work at Lichen. So our team has worked with the science, the head of the science department at the high school, recently proposing some STEM projects for the school, and will be in science fair judges for the school. COVID certainly had an impact on our ability to interact with the children in high school, but we fully intend to bring internships back online as quickly as we can. We want to expose these kids to, to science and technology as early as we can, and we're excited to do that. In terms of the business, we have a lot of national and international clients that come to town, that stay in town and frequent the restaurants and things. And we have a lot of people coming through the facility. It's kind of a, it's a beautiful facility. So we have a lot of people coming onsite, touring the site, prospective customers and existing customers, a lot of activity at the site. And with that, we obviously need a lot of services to support the site. And that's, that's very much ongoing. The, on the next slide, in terms of our community involvement, and you know, I'd say we've been, you know, one year post-construction, and we'll say we're post-COVID, but, but people coming back to the site working. We've been very active, so we're using the Hopkinton Arts Center for our off-site meetings, and we could, we'll continue to do that. Project Just Because, we sponsored their annual golf tournament. I actually played in that golf tournament along with Tony and Matt behind me. Done donation drives. We did a virtual walkathon for, I think, One Mission. Matt is a member of the Chamber of Commerce and also working with Hopkinton and Michael Carter, Lisno Respite Center. So a lot of activity for this young company in the, in the, in the community. But also, as I mentioned, internships. So high school interns, we're going to, we're going to host up to six Northeastern University co-ops starting in January for six months. Folks that are in their 34th, third or fourth year of school, trying to hopefully encourage them to come to Hopkinton and start to work at Lichen. But also, we'll be working with the STEM programs at the high school. We absolutely, biotechnology is definitely an industry that, you know, sends the elevator down when we're successful. So the, the industry is really looking to stimulate the next generation of scientists, and we will continue that here at Lichen. So that's, that's really the summary of the business and where we stand. So right now, we're seeing significant demand for what we do, for the services that we have. We're happy to report that the existing facility, the first construction, we expect that capacity to be consumed at some point next year. That's why we started this next expansion. That's just going to add about 90% of the, or add 90% more capacity to that existing facility. That will be online in Q3 or Q4 of next year. But to do a green field site or a brown field site, it will take about two to two and a half years. So when we think about our capacity demand, this is the time we need to start making decisions around that future capacity, and that's why we're, we're here tonight. I want to pass it back to Matt, and then we can enter the questions.
Sure. Thanks, Pat. So the town is very well familiar with the Economic Development Incentive Program. You've been participating in this roughly since 2005. But for the benefit of those that aren't familiar with it, that may be watching, that may be listening, the benefit of this program is it's a state program that encourages investment in communities, that increases the tax base in communities, and also facilitates the investment by businesses to create new, good-paying jobs, as we've seen here. There's one last slide. I just wanted to show off that presentation, if we could. If we can go back to slide nine. Sorry about that. No?
Yeah.
Well, it's okay. There it is, okay. So as I stated, it's a state program, and it creates these things called tax increment financing agreements, which you're very well familiar with. It's based on the increased assessed value of the property. And the benefit of a tax incentive, tax increment financing agreement is that it allows the community to phase in new growth over a period of time. And so it allows you to basically stabilize your new growth coming in, which is a way to increase your ability to pay for municipal services in the future. And that's really the true benefit of a TIF agreement. And it also creates jobs. Typically, TIF terms run between five and 20 years. The current Lichen TIF is a 10-year TIF that they're in. And the TIF exemption is typically between 1% and 100% of the new investment, both in real estate and in personal property. So in the present TIF that they currently have, their projected investment was $12 million. As of this year, they've invested $25 million, so they've beaten that. According to the job creation, which is typically phased in over five years as you're bringing new people on, they've, were supposed to create 55 jobs by this point in time. They've created 68 jobs, and they have full intention to continue to create the jobs that are required under that, under the existing TIF. The new TIF will be, is going to be supported, hopefully, by a state life science tax credit, which is through the state. There'll be the tax increment financing on the new investment, which will be made between Mr. Nahian and between Lichen, as Pat described. And there will also be an exemption, a request for exemption on the personal property taxes. So you, there are two schedules, one for the real estate, one for the personal property. The negotiations are basically with the TIF team, and my understanding is they start tomorrow. And that's when really the rubber meets the road, so to speak, and the details will be put together. My purpose tonight was to come and say thank you for the past support and to let you know a little bit about the new project and to answer any questions you may have. Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Yeah, to the chair. My question is, tell me about the total exemption for personal property. Now, in a company like this, has a huge amount of personal property.
Exactly.
And this isn't, isn't a, you know, a land and building deal like the TIF is?
I can explain that.
Okay.
Okay. Typically, a manufacturer in Massachusetts has 100% exemption from personal property taxes. Due to the corporate structure of Lichen, they're not set up as a corporation. They're an LLC. So as a result, because of their corporate structure, they would not qualify for the typical manufacturing exemption under Chapter 59 that would be afforded to any other manufacturer in the state. And so what happens is, in that situation, the law recognizes that different corporations or different companies are set up by different corporate structures, and that an LLC can get a 100% TIF exemption on personal property for the term of the TIF.
For the term of the TIF?
Just for the term of the TIF. After that, all of the exemptions that are granted are for the term of the TIF. And then after that, and that's the benefit of a TIF, because you're phasing in the growth over that period, and then at the end, you have the full investment, which is fully taxable down the road. So that's the explanation.
Do you think you're ever going to get the state to give you the manufacturing designation?
The, it's not a matter of them giving it to us at this point. It's a matter of the corporate structure and the way it is. In order for that to happen, the general laws would have to be changed, and so what they, which is always possible.
It can happen, yeah.
It can, no, definitely can. But the way that the state addresses that right now is that it allows the TIF exemption on personal property to handle what would be an otherwise automatic exemption for a manufacturer.
So after the TIF, you're not, you're not going to be asking for any kind of personal property exemption?
I don't know if this future expansion in the works, but as of this expansion here, no.
Okay. Because it's going to be hot on the town if it doesn't have the manufacturing.
Well, I understand that.
As they say, can't do that, so... But if it's just for the TIF and the length of the TIF, I don't really have a problem.
And it is part of, you know, the incentive to allow the investment, as Patrick said. They're vested into the town. You can see that from their personal involvement with all of the different entities in town. And it's a growing company. And as we've seen over the past two years, bioscience is a wonderful, growing sector of the economy, and thank God we have it.
So I was here from the beginning with Tony. He came in and made a couple of presentations. We had a special town meeting to vote on the TIF. It went through. Since then, I think I've had three or four interactions with, with Tony. And I can tell you, every time I leave one of the interactions with Tony, I'm, I feel motivated. He's a, a good guy, and he is exactly what I feel is a huge characteristic to help our town continue on in its paces to continue as great as it is. In the 80s, we had EMC come in and really put South Street on the map. They didn't put Hopkinton on the map, we were already there. But they put South Street on the map. And as evolution goes, you know, they got, they got sold, and who knows what's going to happen with, with the EMC slash Dell contingency up on South Street. So Tony and, and I don't mean to just say Tony, but the whole Lichen Corporation has come in and done absolutely everything that, that they've promised. They are a wonderful partner, and we have a great relationship with them. I am both feet in the water, all for the, the stuff that Lichen is, has done and, and looks to do. I would love to see all the, the biosciences over at Boz Mountain come up to our area too and give them a TIF too. Just fill that place up and, and continue, continue doing what you're doing. It's, you know, when COVID hit, I work in the medical field. You can't work from home. You can't have a remote office doing your cell therapy and things like that. So it's, it's pandemic-proof. And I, I thank Tony and the whole corporation or LLC of Lichen and the Chamber of Commerce and everybody that's been involved. They've done a wonderful job, and I myself, as a selectman, is very appreciative of, of everything that you guys have done.
Thank you very much. Tony is a force to be reckoned with, and he has a very good team at Lichen as well. I have the opportunity to work with a lot of corporations, and I'm always impressed when I deal with the Lichen team myself.
So I think during the golf tournament, we were behind them, and I think we did do better than them. He's not that much of a force to be reckoned with. I'll puff you up, but I'm always going to cut you down too.
That's very much.
Yeah, no, thank you for the presentation. I think it went through everything, and I'm happy that you're meeting and exceeding your agreement from the first TIF, so it seems like a good next step. Just for another procedure, if we were to authorize the negotiations to begin tonight, will we have to have another special town meeting, or is this at some, at some point in the future?
I think it's dependent on when they apply for the TIF. If, when they apply for the TIF, we can get it on the warrant for the regular town meeting.
We can do it. Oh, the goal will be for the May. Okay.
That's awesome. I was going to ask that question.
Yeah, that's definitely the goal.
But even, even that special town meeting that we had was subsidized.
Yeah.
It's just actually been hard to get people to town meeting with COVID, and that, you know, we're thinking it would be a little bit closer to over now.
You know, we asked you in for the May 2nd town meeting.
Great.
The May town meeting, whatever that is. More information?
That was actually going to be, my question was the schedule, anticipated schedule and the special town meeting, just because it is a little bit challenging. And I imagine it's part of the negotiation, so maybe you don't know or can't say. But are you anticipating, if you can say, the same period of time, like proposing a 10-year TIF?
Um, I think it'll be roughly in the same timeframe, maybe a little bit longer, but roughly the same.
Well, I'm personally delighted to see the success that has happened and look forward to the growth. I think it's really exciting for Hopkinton, to be honest with you. This is pretty terrific.
So I think it's been, it's really exciting to see Lichen come into town and, and do what it's done and, you know, keep up with all their obligations as far as being a partner with the town, and it's greatly appreciated. One thing, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to ignore that we are in the middle of a pandemic, and you are in bioscience, and I just want to, like, get this out there, that you guys are working in manufacturing. And do we have any biohazards that the public should be concerned with?
Not to the more, but I was just going to, no, the manufacturing we're doing is very clean.
Okay.
So can I just make the point that the folks at home can't necessarily hear you if you're not at the microphone?
Yeah.
No, the answer is the cell therapy manufacturing, in terms of what we work with, is extremely safe. It's clean manufacturing. It's not chemicals and things like that. So it's, in the most part, it's very clean manufacturing.
Well, not really talking about chemicals, more virus, you know, the...
Yeah, so there's, we use viral vectors to modify the human cells. But we have a biohazard committee, we have an EHS committee, we have a consultant, EHS consultant that also watches over everything, so it's, it's well-controlled and highly regulated.
Highly regulated?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I just wanted, I just wanted the public to, to know the safety measures that you're taking, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So I request a motion to authorize a town manager and a legal team to formally commence TIF negotiations with Lichen Bioscience.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sean's not here.
Is Sean on Zoom?
He is.
Okay, COVID-19 update. Sean McCullough, the Public Health Director, will update the board on the town's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Sean, I know the, the agenda gives you 10 minutes, but can you keep it down to five? John?
Could I jump?
Yes.
There we go.
Before Sean starts, Jennifer Reed has her hand up, so I just wanted to let her know that we did appoint her already to the Youth Commission, in case that was her question.
Okay. All right, Sean, you're up. You're up, Sean.
Yeah, okay. So I want to thank you for having the Department here tonight. We have a soon beginning surge in cases since the beginning of November. Our 14-day positivity rate has gone from 0.6 at the beginning of the month to 3.69. Our 14-day case count has gone from 29 to 81. We had 32 new cases since the December 12 report that I'm starting figures from. So where I, where I lead for the state, the entire state and the city, my dramatic injuries in, got their cases. We believe, based on the DPH conversation we had and conversations that department members have had with physicians throughout the area, the spike in cases are coming from, in Seattle, in the areas. We see cases coming from more at school and daycares, and then some additional board travel. At the end of the day, you know, conversation with the DPH, you know, our, our best strategy is what we've been working on throughout the pandemic. We need to focus on vaccination. We have an outstanding vaccination rate in town, as yesterday, 77% of our 5 to 11-year-olds have received their second doses. We expect that cohort to be at 82 to 84% vaccinated by the end of the week. We're encouraging people to go out and get boosters. We are in the process of trying to stand up a grant-funded regional vaccination clinic. We should have word on whether or not we'll get the funding tomorrow, at the end of the day. I thought there would be that communities including Ashland, Westboro, Southborough, Northborough, and Holliston, would get together, stand up a clinic, utilizing staff, paid staff, from all of the surrounding communities, and we would be able to provide both boosters and pediatric vaccinations to help increase the amount of booster residents in our area, and then we will provide an opportunity to provide vaccinations to those who haven't been able to attend the clinics at Hopkinton, or at the, well, at our school clinics, or at our smaller clinics at the nurses department. Besides vaccination, boosters, we really need people to focus on staying at home, and there are a large majority of these cases that we're seeing, including the super spreader case, involved sick people coming to work with allergy-like symptoms or no symptoms. With some asymptomatic cases, we've had people in the household, ill, and it's, as, as I'm doing tonight, staying home because we're, we're testing in the house today. We want people to take that opportunity to test, evaluate whether or not, what is going on in the household, is COVID or not, and if it's COVID, we're taking, you know, contacting the health department and taking appropriate measures. When we're not doing that, as in the super spreader case that reference, we had an individual come into a workplace, they spent two days in the workplace, got eight individuals that they had contact with that day, sick. Those eight people went home and got everyone, regardless of vaccination status, ill in their homes, which put us up to like 30-plus. And then asymptomatic children from those homes attended classes or other events, spreading it further, and then those additional spread into another workplace in town. So, you know, all of this can be prevented by staying home when you're sick, keeping your children home when there's a question of them being ill. And then just practicing the basics that we've been, you know, following for the last two years. It's, you know, avoiding large gatherings, utilizing face cover when they're in environments such as large gathering. Yeah, staying home is a basic of face covering. And, and really just practicing distancing again. One of the things that we're, we're quite, what we're doing quite well in the health, in the municipal offices is, you know, we're respecting those that have potential vulnerable person at home, or wearing face coverings. When we're in those offices, we're staying distant, when we're having conversations, we're just asking people to kind of model the same behavior. And we're, the next time my board meets, we're going to discuss recommending a face covering recommendation throughout the community. We all know that going as far as having a mandate, it's going to be useful when, in fact, it's almost impossible for us to place the mandate. But putting out the recommendation, we're going to be working on additional communications. We think doing that, I've been before the select board, we'll follow up interviews with local media, HM, that should be enough to turn this surge around and put us in a much better place for the Christmas and New Year's holidays. Any questions?
I am all set.
No, thank you for the update, Sean, and good luck with the testing at your home.
Thank you very much, Sean. It's, it's disappointing to hear about the super spreader event and to hear our numbers going up like this, and I think it just kind of hammers the point home, that we all need to be diligent, we can't let our guards down. You know, we get vaccinated and you feel like, oh, I'm invincible, but, but it's just not the case. Now with Omicron, there's even more reason to stay diligent.
And one positive note is that, you know, with the high rate of vaccination in town, the illness has been more of a nuisance condition, whether it's like a nuisance cold, rhinos, maybe a slight fever for a day or so, but really, as most have said, it's been like allergy-like symptoms. For those that aren't vaccinated, we've had two, and only two in the community, and that in the U.S. U.S. So, since vaccination became available, since we embraced vaccinating in this community, we, you know, talk on what we have, adding to tablets, and we've had two, only two, I got in the past year, and those, again, were unvaccinated individuals. So, if we can get the, you know, this last group of residents vaccinated, continue to worry about the kids, and then as we prepare for the, you know, the 04-year-olds, I think we'll be in a much better place going into the spring season.
Great. Thank you very much, Sean. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay. The next agenda item is the annual license renewals. The board will consider renewing three annual licenses. There will be more licenses for renewal at the next meeting. Board members, the applications are in the meeting packet along with a summary sheet. So, we have the Hopkinton Tennis and Swim Club at 27 Lumber Street. They have a Section 12 all alcoholic beverages on premises. That's not built yet, though, that's just the license, that's kind of a placeholder, right? The next one is Donald Crawford, DBA, WSAB Enterprise. It's a wholesale Class II auto sales. And the third one is the Thomas White Doing Businesses, Whitehall Auto Sales at 34R Spring Street, and that's a Class II license. Board members, any questions or discussion? So I've had discussions with the, just informal discussions with the owner of the tennis and swim club, and maybe not as many recently as I had in the past, but, so he has a pretty diverse professional business going on, and he, the, like, they were going full bore initially to get this swimming tennis club up. They wound up slowing down due to, so he owns a Boston lawnmower. And he, he didn't want to overextend himself financially to build this. He had had, so we'd had a drought and then a couple of bad winters, so he wasn't selling any lawnmowers, he wasn't selling any snow blowers, because we had no, no grass growing, no snow falling. And then the following year, he really, he really kind of took it on the chin, because with no lawnmowing and no snow blowing, there was no servicing of those machines. So, he didn't want to overextend himself and have to lay off people to build this swim club. So, his motives are very, very pure, very pure. He's a Hopkinton resident, and someone that, I have a, a good professional, not professional, I buy a lot of things from him. Hopefully, my wife is not watching. But I buy a lot of things from him. So, he, last I spoke to him, he's, I know that he had gone, put his, his building back through the planning board and was kind of downsizing a little bit, and waiting for some permits there, and, and then I know that he has, he has the backing of, of a business partner of his, and they're looking to move on it relatively quick. So, you know, there's been, you know, they've certainly had no violations of their liquor license since they don't have a building there. So, I see no reason not to, not to continue the placeholder with them.
Okay. I guess I would just be curious, I think I was on the planning board when we approved the changes to it, which would have been a couple of years ago. Is it coming along, the site, or it's just not?
The site is stagnant.
The site is stagnant.
However, the, the business plan is not stagnant. Mario, when you were on the planning board, was, had this come back before you, where they had downsized it and?
Yeah, yeah. When Amy was there too.
Okay.
Yep, yep. That piece is done, unless it come back before the planning board, that I don't know about.
Yeah, I think, no, they're good now. So, but regardless, you know, they, they own the liquor license, they pay for it, and maybe they're not selling a lot of liquor right now, but their, their plans are to go full speed ahead and, and to build this at some point or so.
And do we have?
Thank you so quick.
Yeah. Do we have licenses to spare? Like, if, so if another company comes that is ready to serve now, is there other, other licenses available? Or, there are, okay. So it's not taken away from a future business?
We're not holding yet.
Okay.
That was my question, is how long can you hold the license open like this?
Is there a limit on how long it can be open without it being used?
The ABCC issues it, it's just not distributed.
Okay.
I would suggest we rethink it if, if we had no licenses left to give other new businesses that would come to town, but as long as we have planning, that's fine.
So I would think that even if we did have no licenses to give it, this is something that he owns. So, if he elects not to use it, that's his choice to not use it. But he owns it, he's not been in violation, am I correct?
That's correct.
Not a drop of liquor has been converted.
He probably could, he probably could sell it, but it's, it's his option to do that. He owns it outright, and he's... I think it's kind of a moot point, considering that we have extra licenses anyway, so.
Yep.
All right.
I'm sorry, since we asked the question, what is the total number of licenses, and where are we on that?
The next meeting, I can answer that question.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to request a motion to renew a Section 12 general on-premises all alcohol license for the Hopkinton Tennis and Swim Club at 27 Lumber Street, and approve a waiver of liquor liability, insurance certificate, workers' compensation insurance certificate, employee ID number, TIF certifications, and fire department safety inspection certificate, as the premises has not been constructed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. I'm also going to request a motion to renew wholesale Class II auto sales license for a WSAB Enterprise, and a Class II license for Whitehall Auto Sales.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Next up, municipal water supply PFAS update, temporary solution. The board will hear an update on the PFAS in the water supply and hearing public input on the temporary solution. The Hopkinton DPW has identified four options for providing a temporary solution for distributing water that is below the maximum contaminant level for PFAS, while a permanent mitigation plan is executed. After the board hears public comment, staff and the board will advise on a preferred temporary solution. Ms. Quala?
Through the chair. First off, I want to thank the local media companies for helping us distribute the service that we should be creating, soliciting this input, like insurance discussion. I hope, hopefully, we ended, as well as Josh Costin, the town's acting director. By this morning, we had over 500 responses to the service, and that's pretty remarkable. In summary, over the past, I think, three weeks, you have heard from John about the four options that we've been considering. We finally put those out for a professional view by consultants, as well as input from the public. And based on what we know now, staff is recommending a two-step process. Immediately, create option one, specifically for vulnerable groups, and begin the process of approving option number four. So it's going to be a combination of taking care of the needs that exist now, attending to vulnerable groups, and immediately embark on a solution that helps us with our overall mission. Our mission as a town is to provide safe water to our residents. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, John will walk you through how we came through the two recommendations.
Through the chair, vice chair.
Vice chair.
Good evening. I'm joined this evening by Leah Stanton, who is an engineer with Weston and Sampson, and also by Eric Carty, who is online. When we were looking at our options, we canvassed communities around us that are also fighting with the PFAS problem. As I had stated previously, there are 60 communities in the Commonwealth that are dealing with this, excuse me. And we also worked with Weston and Sampson to find out what communities are doing their work. So we came up with the four options. And option one is for reimbursement of those customers who are in sensitive subgroups to provide their, to, for them to offset the purchase price of their, of their bottled water. The temporary treatment system that would serve as a filling station for bottles for folks, that one was not well-received by the community, and it was one that we didn't believe would, would serve our customers or the residents very well. And three and four are essentially the same thing, in that we would install a filtration system. The only difference is that item number three, we would purchase the filter system, and number four, we would rent the filtration system. Excuse me. It's really going to depend on availability on, in the marketplace, because, as I said, there are 60 communities that are dealing with this, just in Massachusetts. So we're going to look for either the rental as a first bet, or as the purchase. But again, they're essentially the same. We're filtering the water at the source, so that once it enters the system, the system has water that meets the, or exceeds the maximum contaminant level, I phrased that wrong, is below the maximum contaminant level, but exceeds the standards. So that's where we are. The, the couple of different media exchange, media options that are out there, there's either ion exchange, which is a three to four month period for procuring those items. There's also granulated activated carling, which can be up to a six-month wait time for us. So that's why we're going with option one, so those folks in those sensitive subgroups can have some relief right away. We will offer a credit to them off of their water bill to offset that cost. If we could just show Ben the next slide, please. As the town manager mentioned, we had over 500 people respond. Option three was the installation of the filter system, and we had 42 pages of comments that folks wrote, and overwhelmingly, the, the comments were related to, let's provide clean water to the system for everyone, not just those people in the sensitive subgroups. And that's, that was our goal from the get-go. So, options three and four again are essentially the same, one is purchase, one is rental. And then finally, the next slide, please, Ben. We asked, are you willing to support an increase on water rates to pay to implement a temporary solution? And nearly 50% of the folks said yes. About 25%, just under 25% of the folks said no, and just over 25% of the folks said maybe. So that's where we are on the filtration system that we're going to be implementing, and the interim measure. the interim measure. It is a, it is a two-part solution, it's an interim solution. Remember that we are looking at a long-term solution for our water supply needs that not only address, uh, volume needs, but also filtration and regulatory compliance needs, and that's where we're looking at either filtration or ultimately connection to the MWRA, uh, water system.
Um, question on the, uh, this, this chart, this, uh, chart we have up there. The people who are willing to pay an increase in water rates, um, that are saying yes, do we know if they are currently paying for water right now? Was that, or is that just kind of a general?
We, uh, through the chair, we put this question out to the entire community.
Okay.
Not just those folks who are water customers. Because even if you run a private well, if you go to Starbucks and you purchase coffee, it's using town water. If you go to the 110 Grill for dinner, your food is, is boiled, if you're having pasta, in town water. So, that's why we put it up to the entire community. So, we don't have a sense of those folks, whether they are water customers or not.
Okay. And then one other question is, um, with, with options three and four, um, more so with option three, 'cause we're purchasing, uh, what are the, the annual, annual maintenance costs for?
Through the chair, for...
Sure.
Um, so there are mainten, annual maintenance costs. The solution that we would implement, um, will require backwashing of the filters, the filters will get, um, clogged up, and, um, uh, it will require media replacement. So, when we design these systems, we work really hard to make sure that the media is, there's nothing in the water before it hits the media, um, so that we can get really long life out of it and we can get, um, maximum value. We will not have that opportunity here, 'cause we're gonna implement it in the, as a temporary solution. So, you will be burning media at a higher rate, um, because of the temporary part of it, so, uh, and the media is not inexpensive. If I had to guess, do you want me to guess?
Sure.
I would say $100,000 a year on maintenance, plus or minus, for this...
On the purchase?
On the temporary system.
That's the purchase?
No.
So, if we were to, if we were to rent it, would the, would those maintenance costs be included in the rental?
That's what I was getting.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we could certainly work through some of that.
Through the chair, the overall annual, the overall three-year estimate is $500,000 to $600,000 for both options. So, the rental, for example, has $150,000 initial setup fee. The annual rental costs are less, but you've also got the media that you've gotta replace.
Mm-hmm.
When you're purchasing the system, you don't have the, uh, the same initial setup cost, you've got the initial capital investment, but again, they both would require the same sort of media. The burn rates would be essentially the same, whether we're purchasing or renting. Again, our goal as a town manager is to, to, to rent these if they're available, but our, our ultimate goal is to put something in place as soon as possible.
So, I mean, from my perspective, I think that, um, the town has an obligation to provide clean water. And I think options one and two are just unfair to residents who need water. Um, I guess what I'm looking at, when I'm considering between options three and four, is what is the, you know, what's gonna be the most cost-efficient, um, until we can get our long-term solution in place?
Uh, just looking, uh, excuse me, one second. Again, through the chair, the, the upfront costs and the annual costs and the, the cost of the media, they're gonna, they're gonna weigh about the same at the end. We're gonna have the $500,000 to $600,000 for, for either one. Uh, we, we are looking at our funding options, we do have, uh, at the end of FY '22 this year, we expect our retained earnings to be somewhere around $170,000 in the Water Enterprise Fund, so that can help us to offset the cost. Um, and then, we're also looking, uh, there are currently no grants available through DDP or otherwise, but we are, uh, we're looking for every opportunity we can to offset the, the upfront costs for us. And we do set in that for water.
There is actually one DEP grant available, it's maximum of $150,000, and, um, they went, there's three allotments. The first, they just released. The second is going to be relea, you know, the application process is going to be released. So, uh, you would certainly be, that $150,000, I would think you'd be a really good candidate for that.
Okay.
Sorry.
My picture's getting better, I mean, everyone.
But it is still a portion of the cost.
Uh, board members?
Yep, I had, um, questions. So, uh, will this require a town meeting vote to go ahead with option three or four? Or do we, you're saying we have money left in the Water Enterprise Fund, we can go ahead and begin?
So, we're looking at, uh, through the chair, we're looking at our procurement options. Um, we, uh, there's a potential we could go to the Department of Revenue for emergency spending. There's also the potential that we could bypass the procurement requirements and do an emergency procurement. Um, if we can't, if the DOR does not approve that, then we would have to call for a special town meeting.
Okay, good to know. And then my other, and I'm, I'm really glad that the, the most people voted for option three and four, 'cause I thought that would be the best option also. Um, the, I was, for the time being, though, if we're going to be identifying and administering it to, uh, clean water to sensitive groups, that seems like a lot of staff time to implement and, like, and it can be, the, I guess my fear is that the people that are the most neediest, have the least resources, will have the less time to fill out forms and prove that they're in a sensitive group and may not be getting the clean water. So, I don't know if, so is, are people going to have to prove that they're in a sensitive group, or will we just take their word for it, that, that they can get free bottled water?
Through the chair, we haven't finalized that yet. Uh, there are communities out there that are requiring a doctor's note or doctor's sign-off. Uh, there are communities out there that are just asking for an application to be completed online and submitted to the community, to the town. Um, the concern is that the, the average residential homeowner only pays $24 a month on a water bill. So, if we are offering extending, excuse me, if we're offering extending a rebate to folks, we wanna make sure that we're only extending it to those folks that, that qualify. Again, as DEP tells us, if you're not in those sensitive subgroups, it's okay to go ahead and drink the water, to use it freely. So, we're, we'll finalize what that option is, we haven't come to a conclusion yet on it.
Okay. I just would really urge better, you know, increased communication, whatever we can, to reach those sensitive subgroups, to make sure everybody's aware, because I know, we've been talking about this for three or four months now, and, but I still meet people in town that didn't know it was an issue, and if they have a baby at home, I'd really like them to be getting the bottled water. So, I don't know if we might consider using the robocall system or the, the blinking signs, just, just the more we can communicate and make sure everybody's getting, uh, safe water, uh, would be great.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, we're also required to send out another mailing to all residential customers and all water customers, excuse me. So, that'll be going out this week. It's almost identical to the one that was previously sent out. The only thing different about this one is that it states that, uh, the town has violated the maximum contaminant level in drinking water standard. But I wanna, I wanna, for emphasis, I wanna reiterate the fact that for cus, customers in a sensitive subgroup, those are pregnant or nursing women, infants, and people diagnosed by their healthcare provider and have a compromised immune system. Consumers in those sensitive subgroups are advised not to consume, drink, or cook with water when the level of PFAS is above 20 parts per trillion. And consumers in those sensitive subgroups are advised to use bottled water for drinking and cooking foods, foods, excuse me, that absorb water like pasta. But, for those folks that are not in a sensitive subgroup, they may continue to consume the water because 20 parts per trillion value is applicable to a lifetime consuming the water in short-duration exposures present less risk. So, sensitive subgroups, don't drink the water. If you're not in those sensitive subgroups, you may drink the water.
Yeah. Just, my other, if I could, just a little more. So, my other ideas for the outreach, too, were just to make sure that, um, so if people who may not have a computer to fill out an online form, are we gonna have signs at the library and at the senior center, senior housing, probably just because, so that we can get them signed up for the reimbursement if they're in a sensitive subgroup. Um, and I don't know if, if the previous notice has gone out in multiple languages and if we're required to do that, you know, I would hate for somebody not, you know, has to, is still learning English and not know that they should be drinking the bottled water, so...
Through the chair, we're working with the IT department to make sure that everything on our PFAS website is, uh, if it's not in multiple languages, that it is something that can be translated into other languages and can be blown up for those folks that have, uh, problems with vision. Um, I think there are also programs out there that will allow the, the text to be read for those folks that agree with it. So, we're trying to make sure that we...
Everything's accessible and translation-friendly. Excellent.
Excellent. You all okay, Amy?
Uh, I don't have any additional questions. I really appreciate, um, Amy, your questions and, um, your, your press for even more information. I think that, um, John, you have been doing a, a wonderful job, the town has been responding tremendously, but, you know, we can't, we can't over-communicate on this one. Um, so, I, I actually really like the robocall for at least one call to make sure everybody knows that if they're on town water, um, and in a sensitive group, they should get the information from the town.
Through the chair, I know the fire chief is in the back of the room, and we will work together to make sure that we can get something out.
Great. And also, by the way, not for nothing, alerts folks that are not on, on the town system that they should get their water tested as well, in their private homes.
I don't really have any questions. I, uh, still many people wanna boil their water, they don't understand it, but other than that, um, you know, we're moving way along. Thank you for your assistance.
Through the chair, the recommendation is not to boil the water, you're gonna boil the water.
You're concentrating it, right?
Concentrates the PFAS.
Right.
I try telling them that. And thanks for your other help this weekend in the water leak.
Talk to them.
So, John, we talked about that 20-point, uh, parts per trillion. Uh, I think it's important to let people know that that is the state, and the federal, um, guidelines are significantly higher. So, yes, we are above what the state, but we're not in a, like, a true panic level. Um, I'm not trying to downplay this at all, but the fact that we are far more stringent, if we adhere to the federal guidelines, we are one-third of where, or at least a half of, of, of where we would have to make announcements.
Through the chair, the, the federal health guideline is 70...
Right.
Parts per trillion.
Yep.
The state's is 20 parts per trillion.
Yep.
And we're at 22 parts per trillion.
So, and it's going down, obviously.
Uh, it has been in the 20s.
Yep. I think last time we were at 28. I thought you said that we were at 28.
We were at 28, that was for that, uh, that one sample period.
Yep.
But the overall average overall rate is 22 parts per trillion.
Good. So, um, so, it's great, I mean, you're doing a great job. You're, you're coming before us and we're letting people know, and it, and it's on the forefront of people's, you know, of the topic of conversation. Um, so, based on those 60 comments that we got, which equates to 0.02% of our town's population who is willing to pay for more, pay more for water, um, I'm glad that they're willing to pay more for water. My question is, I wanna put this to the professionals, the people that, that know this, and, and when they look at all four options, with, what is the best option for us? Uh, and anytime that I get into the, the lease versus buy, um, question, is it like a, so is the technology likely to change, where if we're, if we're renting or leasing, is there, if we're halfway through it and all of a sudden a better option, like the, uh, you know, the water pump 2.0 comes out, that's, uh, that's better? Would that be, um, put in with us as part of the leasing deal, or, or would we be stuck with the same piece of technology that we get from start to finish for that three-year period? Um, I, it's just a, a question that I have.
Uh, so, there's some setup time associated with the equipment. I would think for the duration that you're looking at, you would stick with the same treatment technology for the whole time? Um, yeah.
Also, through the chair, whenever a particular treatment that we propose, it has to be approved by the DEP. So, we would get DEP's approval and, uh, you can, it would be hard for me to imagine that DEP would approve something and then later say that it doesn't meet the requirements. As long as we're, as long as we're bringing the PFAS levels below the 20 parts per trillion, we will be compliant.
So, what if we were to go out and purchase a piece of equipment versus lease a piece of equipment, and that piece of equipment's installed, and when it gets up and running, it does not lower the PFAS enough to acceptable levels? What happens then?
We have, um, pretty good data. So, at this point, there, uh, that, there's three ways to remove the PFAS, um, ion exchange media, granular activated carbon, or reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis is off the table because of the cost, and both the ion exchange and the granular activated carbon are proven technologies for removing PFAS. Um, they get fuzzy in with the precursors, which is other things that are in the water that affect how they operate. Um, so, but we, there'll be column tests to, before we go out and spend $100,000-plus dollars on equipment to make sure that, that it works.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, you're way behind. So, um, I'm gonna request a motion, uh, to recommend and endorse option three as a temporary solution.
Three is the purchase, or three is the?
Three is the purchase.
Are we also in the meantime doing number one? Is that also true?
Yes.
Right. And solution number one, for the time being, until...
Solution number one, for the, for the time being, for people who need water. And then, um, option number three is a temporary solution until we have a permanent solution.
Right. I think the town manager said he preferred number four, is that right? Or, or it doesn't really matter, 'cause you don't even know if you can get a lease?
Uh, through the chair, uh, the town manager initially, and, and staff initially recommended number four, but based on recent information about the availability, uh, is it possible to make a motion for installing a filter system, whether it's number three, which is a purchase, or number four, which is a rental, based on whichever one is more readily available?
Question I have on the purchase is, what happens at the end of it, when we're done? What do we do with it?
Through the chair.
Mr. Chmala?
Yeah, through the chair, now, in fact, this answers a very good question. One of the discussions I had with the consultants was, uh, what happens to the equipment when we no longer need? And that's why we ended up picking the one that was option number four. Namely, uh, there is no foreseeable, possibly use of the equipment beyond, um, using it for, uh, so, to answer your question, we can't use it for any other water-related purposes. And for that reason, we can see why the town spent so much on, um, buying it, and then at the same time spent additional funds to take away.
But don't we, won't we, so under the lease option, we don't have to pay for them to remove it?
Maybe included in the price, maybe?
I would think that's included.
I'm sure we're paying for it, but...
I'm just asking a question, I mean...
But if it's the same number, if the...
Yeah.
If it's $150,000 to procure it, or $150,000 to lease it, um, and at the end of the day, when we're done, on the lease, they just pack it up and take it away, or if we own it, we gotta put it down on white metal on one month, one, one Saturday a month down at the DPW.
Yeah.
Or, I guess the quarries are closed these days.
So, I will tell you, um, as you enter into the PFAS realm, uh, wastes are a hu, a big topic of concern, so getting rid of the filters, in full disclosure, is a piece of cake compared to getting rid of the media that is now contaminated with PFAS. So, um, and we are very emerging in the disposal market for PFAS waste. They are mandating removal of it from drinking water, but they have not resolved, and when I mean they, I mean the regulators, have not resolved where it goes and how it gets disposed of. So, um, I don't know if that makes, lends weight to your argument or detracts from it, but, um, waste and removal is an issue.
Mm-hmm.
And it will be costs, um, borne by the generator, which will be the town of Hopkinton, regardless of the options.
So, the, the media containers, are they, a container that is on a trailer dump, or are they carbon fiber?
On a concrete pad. They're on a concrete pad, and they're vessels, filtration vessels.
Through the chair, they'll also have to have some sort of a deep structure around them, temporary structure, so that they can heat it. We're entering the winter months, and of course, next month, during the winter thereafter, so these have to be heated systems so that they don't freeze.
Okay.
And where do you store them when they're at capacity, prior to disposal?
So, you would pull the media out and dispose of the media separate? The vessels? I think that there may be a market for vessels. There currently is a market for vessels. They're getting pulled out of, the manufacturers can't keep up with demand at this point, so who knows what three years, you know, while we're crystal balling, who knows what three years it's going to look like?
To have them able to resell ours.
So, I'm just asking, so I guess theoretically, if a vessel, if the media in a vessel will last, let's say, three months before it needs to be replaced, at the three-month, you're physically having to go in, clean the PFAS out of the vessel, and replace the media, where does that get stored prior to having it be shipped away?
So, we're not looking at three months, we're looking at more like a year, hopefully. And it would get trucked off-site as part of the media exchange?
Okay.
Because you need new media in as quickly as you get it out, because you need that source back in service.
Yep.
And currently, I think landfills are getting shut down by the day for PFAS waste. So, I think right now, it's oven. I think 10,000 degrees, I forget though.
Okay.
But, yeah, incinerate.
Those lucky birds.
Thanks.
Yep. All right. That was my question.
Questions?
So, I think the motion is to recommend immediately implementing option one and endorsing the installation of a temporary treatment system at well six, either rented or purchased, depending on availability. Right?
Okay. Is that the motion?
That's the motion, yeah.
Second.
All right. We have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose?
So, you two are both in favor of that motion, right? You think that that's most advantageous for our town?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And based on availability, right? So, cool.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the slide room.
Thank you.
I just want to say that we truly appreciate your kind words, and it goes out to the entire staff, the town manager, the health director, our engineers, Eric Cardy, town engineer, everyone is playing a role in this, solving this problem, so we appreciate your kind words all.
How much snow are we getting tomorrow?
Hopefully, nothing above. We're seeing one to two inches, but that's pretty much on the grassy surfaces. The temperature of the pavement is starting to get to the freezing level, but we may have to salt, but I don't see us putting on a house.
Great. See you tomorrow.
Standing in six feet.
Yeah. All right. So, that brings us to the town manager report. Mr. Kamala?
Yes. Through the chair, please. May I say, because of the impending storm for tomorrow, John Weston and the TPTA director shut down any water commencing. This is, going forward, going to depend on the projected weather patterns. If the weather allows, they may continue to do some work, but overall, we worry the department, you know, that there's no work going on in Main Street because of the coming storm tomorrow. And then FY '23 budget update, I am happy to report that we have the FY '23 budget is progressing on schedule. Department operating budgets are being analyzed, reviewed carefully, and the initial results show that most departments have submitted requests that will be added that was issued by the self-porting town manager, with a few exceptions. For one, the schools have advised, the budget advisory group, that they expect a steep increase in funding for out-of-district special education placements next year. We're working with the school leadership to explore and move forward, establishing a special education stabilization account. This is a mission that has been discussed between the school board and the self-porters, and this appears to be time for us to take some action at town meeting. In addition to the schools, we are also reviewing a lot of related increases pertaining to the HR office, the communications department, as mentioned before, the library, as well as the town clerk's office. On the capital projects requested, we are seeing this request that is pretty standard, as we've seen before, with a few exceptions. The school department is looking at possible town-funded sort of program. The communications response team is also looking for updating our radio systems. In addition, latest breaking news, we all heard about the, you may have heard about the catastrophic loss of a frontline fire engine. When I know the FIA program technical facility where it was built, I know it is part of an approved FY '22 capital improvement project. I expect that we will be adjusting capital budget accommodations based on this development once we fully understand the extent of the coverage provided by the several layers of insurance protection that will embrace any time of the incident. On the living sign, I am pleased to report that the state department of living accepted the test rate setting actions the self-port approved at its last meeting. Without approval in running or in hand, the FIA team is wanting to update revenue projections that says it's a baseline for the fiscal year 2023 budget, specifically including the revised amount for new head schools that was approved as part of the study. I'm also fairly impressed and excited that the continuous improvement efforts in our budget process are leading to tight links between the town strategic goals and its budget development actions. On December 13th, this Monday, you will hear more about departmental goals and how they relate to our current budget process. And finally, the working group includes the mine office, the schools, the budget analysis group meetings, we are continuing our meetings, and hopefully, we will also have the opportunity to meet with the school committee and the appropriations committee this time of day to hear more on our budget processes. This is?
Nope. I'm good. I think we're good on the budget.
I have one budget thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Just for the all-hands meeting, I remember last year, all the departments gave a presentation, and they just spoke their presentation, we didn't get, like, a handout, and for me, especially with the hearing last, it's really helpful if I have a visual, I can read while they're speaking, and so I can retain the information better. So, if it's possible that they provide either during or after a hard copy, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Yeah. If there are any questions, more than one, the company funds grant way. By way of package, we have one ability is a tentative agreement following one meeting with company funds. The agreement has three parts to it. First, we have asked and company funds is agreed to achieve compliance with the approved cyclone through appropriate signage and a detailed in the packet, a diagram that shows the appropriate signage to be installed specifically relative to the western driveway. Secondly, beyond compliance with site conditions, company funds will be stripped, the eastern driveway to exit only. And this is a comment that I think the board made several times. It was amazing getting to that point, but they've no agreed to do that. And then, thirdly, the town is going to continue to monitor the safety operations of this portion of West Main Street, including the operations of the recently approved mobile drivers. Chairman, John, the town engineer, as well as the first chief, I'd like to ask any questions that you may have on this topic.
So, I had a few questions that I've already addressed with the chief of police.
So, we need to hear them for the public, though, too. Chief, can you come forward? Thank you.
I asked John.
Awesome.
The partners in this.
Thank you.
So, do you care to repeat your question?
No.
Okay.
So, what are your concerns, or what are your thoughts on this?
So, that is the most heavily traveled area of roadway that we have, with a lot of turning and multiple lanes. So, we do see, it is our hottest area for accidents. We do see that most of them are non-injury accidents, and the accidents occur from the ramps all the way up through past Dunkin' Donuts, the new Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
So, we've been compiling data and trying to parse through it, and trying to build a timeline for the different changes that have occurred, because you can't just look at the raw data, because so much has changed over the years. But we're looking at it, so. We've worked with the, if you want to speak to the work we did with the engineer firm, and the recommendations and...
Through the chair, we have had two different engineering firms look at this challenge, WorldTech Engineering and the H.B., and they've come back with a number of recommendations, but the overriding recommendation is to make that easterly driveway an exit only. I happened to be there yesterday, and I happened to see someone, they actually have a requirement that when folks are filling up, they have to be facing the easterly direction.
Yeah.
But when allowing people to come in in that easterly driveway, folks, they pull up and they start facing the westerly direction, and they are facing the wrong way. And then their only way to exit is out of that westerly driveway.
Yeah.
So, there needs to be additional signage onsite, and I'm going to work with the folks at Cumberland Farms to make sure that they put up proper signage there. And they're also going to work to make sure that there's signage to show that that easterly driveway for the one near Starbucks is exit only, to try to limit some of those [inaudible] conflicts, which are only going to get worse once the mobile gas station opens. Their driveway is going to be located more closely to the easterly driveway for Cumberland Farms, the one near Starbucks. So, there's going to be a lot more turning patterns that are happening there, turning movements, so that's why it's important that that easterly driveway be exit only, which they've agreed to.
So, is it, I'm sorry, through the chair, is it the safest place to take a left-hand turn? And I use that loosely, because I think it's a really challenging spot to take a left-hand turn, coming out of there right on top of the light? I mean, that's where the most lanes are, right? Isn't that the most challenging spot to take a left-hand turn, coming out of there?
So, when you exit the east easterly exit?
Yeah.
Which will be the only exit going forward, you are crossing two lanes.
On one side.
On one side.
And then, there's two lanes on the other side.
Yes.
Yeah. So, is there a solution in your minds that is reasonable, where we would, I know, the mobile station is not functional right now, so there's only one option coming off for gas. I'm famous for saying, "I pick my gas, depending on which way I'm driving." But when they are open across the way, is there a solution that really makes sense in that traffic pattern to keep people just turning right and not also going left?
I would defer to engineers and the planning board.
We couldn't solve it either, just so you know. We took a shot at it.
Through the chair, there is an option, and that is putting the mallards down the center of the roadway, like we see in front of Wendy's in Dover.
Yeah.
However, that would restrict left-hand turn lanes for folks that are exiting Cumberland Farms. It would limit those folks that are traveling west of the, want to turn it out, Cumberland Farms, and the same problem for the folks that are trying to enter and exit the mobile gas station.
Yeah.
So, that's an extreme level, that we are, we're looking at that option, but we want to work with the businesses, so that we're not discouraging customers, or we're not turning customers away. So, that's why it's important, and it's very helpful, that with the town manager's assistance in the meeting that we just had with the folks at Cumberland Farms, that they agreed to making that easterly driveway an exit only, which is probably the best that we can hope for at this point.
I actually thought it was an exit only, and when they expanded, that it was, there was one entrance and one exit. No? I know that it didn't, used to be, the no-left turn used to be at the westerly end, right? So, when it was first permitted, they weren't supposed to take left-hand turns out of there, because the traffic was going out. So, now that, switching the traffic pattern, now that we've sort of exacerbated the problem, and now we don't, we can't seem to go back to no-left turns for some reason.
I don't believe that you can take, that it's still a no-left turn from the westerly exit.
Yes, but that's not where people are exiting.
Right.
Right? That's not going to hurt anybody's feelings.
Right.
Because why?
Because they came in the wrong. If you come in to pump gas in the wrong way, you'd be coming in what is proposed to be the entrance, and you'd be facing west.
Right.
Then you'd try to exit at that westerly exit, which not many people do.
Right. And you shouldn't do that.
No, but originally, that was the exit, and there was no left turn. So, we're just trying to get them...
Trying to run out of the westerly exit.
Right. We're trying to get them back to the original no-left turns out of that business. Because it's not a good spot for left-hand turns, right?
Well, I...
It's the hottest accident spot in Hopkinton. I think I just heard you say that.
That, but not that, necessarily not that entrance. That's from Dunkin' Donuts to the ramps, that he's saying is the hottest.
I'm sorry, Dunkin' Donuts to the ramps.
It's a long stretch, not just...
It's a big stretch.
Yes. Okay. All right. So, is Dunkin' Donuts causing trouble?
It did last week.
We're seeing accidents in the entire area, all the way out on the ramp.
And was it a left-hand turn out of there?
I think we needed a roundabout.
No. We needed a roundabout. This is how it happens.
Yeah.
So, there are, so with the two lanes there, there's nothing to say, like, I don't know what the data is on, I know that there's a big, oops, sorry, sorry, Bob, there's a big push in town to make that a no-left turn. If you were coming out of that driveway, there have been accidents, and I know of one person that's been in an accident, coming out of that driveway to take the left onto what used to be Elm Street.
Sure.
And that's not necessarily taking a left turn to go head westbound on West Main Street, but it's being sensationalized and lumped into this, every accident in the town is not, this hub zone is strictly people taking left-hand turns and getting T-boned, and you're saying that a lot of the accidents are not injury-causing accidents. They're not all accidents that are people taking a left-hand turn out of the Cumberland Farms. There are, and the data that's being compiled is from the entrance ramps to and including the new Dunkin' Donuts, which is causing, so Starbucks, so everywhere, I mean, I see posts on Facebook and all over the place saying, "Another left-hand turn accident." Well, I've seen a lot of people come out of there that take left turns that don't get in accidents. So, there's, at some point, there's a little bit of onus that is on the operator of the vehicle. However, it's not up to me to decide how you design your intersection. Do I think that, so if you made that second, that left-turn lane onto, what is that, Parkwood? What, is that Lumber Street extension? So, if you made that, instead of it being, say, 400 yards long, if you made that 50 yards long, where you're taking, if you're taking that left turn, you're only crossing one lane, you could do that. It would be a traffic nightmare, but you could do it.
Through the chair, it would be a traffic nightmare. The engineers at BHB, they looked at that, that left-hand turn lane is actually just about the length that it needs to be, when you consider the number of cars that queue in, and also the deceleration of cars that are coming under 495, 45 miles an hour.
Yep.
So, that's something...
At 45 miles an hour.
Well, that's... be, when you consider the number of cars that queue up, and also the deceleration of cars that are coming under four ninety-five, at forty-five miles an hour.
Yep.
So, that would something.
At forty-five miles an hour.
Well, that's, that's always.
Yes, that's what everybody drives.
I think, I think what we need to do is, we need to compile the data and listen to what the engineers are saying as to what is, what's gonna make sense here. I don't think any of us board members sitting here can say that this is the answer.
Nope.
Um, but, that's a hot zone, and I've seen a lot of accidents, um, from people exiting the east side, turning left, and it's usually because of somebody being courteous, saying, oh, come on, car on the other side doesn't see it, and bam, that's where the accident happens.
So, the message is, don't be courteous.
Oh, it's by electric vehicles.
So, um, no, I think, I think the moral of this story is, let's, uh, get the data, and let's see what the engineers say, and let's fix this, because, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of damage happening there.
I have, I have one more question, um, the, the Starbucks, that is a no-left turn right there, there, is that true?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's, it's certainly possible, um, to consider sort of safety patterns of traffic, um, as an, as an interim solution.
Through the chair, the problem is that Cumberland Farms has told us this, that they are complying with their approved site plan.
Mm-hmm.
And unless we reopen that site plan, and there's no reason for us to do that, and they're not coming back to ask for anything.
Not anytime soon.
Those who oppose a low-left turn.
Uh, no, I, so I, I appreciate that, I appreciate the technicalities, I, and I appreciate the, the look of, uh, you know, the engineers looking at it, and that, those are the solutions we wanna really be talking about, um, but it also, from a matter of practicality, it, it is a problematic spot, and we need to sort of have a global solution, 'cause it's not gonna get any better, right? The traffic is gonna increase, the mogul's coming in, it's gonna be a bigger draw, we hope that's the whole plan, right?
Through the chair, at least the mobile gas station has a, a safe exit if they want to go out the backside of the mogul.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Over to Elm to Lower, and then through the centralized intersection.
Yeah, we're hoping.
And the Starbucks area has an exit off of Lumber Street, too, so people have choices, yeah.
And it would be wonderful with this new facility coming in, if they offer this similar products that the other, that Cumberland Farms does, so people aren't, you know, if the gas is the same price, and it's the same, everything's the same, why would you cross the street?
Why bother?
But, uh, some people do it strictly to take a left turn out of there and prove people wrong, on that guy.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Mr. Kamalu?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the opioid settlement, um, we are recommending, and I'm asking the chief of the town manager to, uh, sign the settlement that Cumberland Farms pertaining to the, um, claims placed against the manufacturers, as well as distributors of opioids. Uh, we have reviewed this with town council, town document, town council, as a producer, uh, specifically, uh, it, it, it doesn't come with additional cost to the town, in order to, uh, it puts the town in the pipeline to receive a settlement fees that they, uh, come down to Massachusetts. Uh, and, and thirdly, uh, it's pretty as a right group at the town's office, uh, here in Massachusetts, uh, as before.
Okay, um, do you need us to vote on that, you need a motion or anything?
Yes, please.
I move to authorize the town manager to sign the opioid settlement participation forms on behalf of the town, and return them to the Massachusetts Attorney General's office.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded, uh, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna say, as someone who, uh, works pretty extensively in this field, this is the way that a lot of states, communities, counties are really starting to make progress in treating, um, substance use disorder generally, but obviously opioid use, um, and it, there, this is, this is the first of the money that's gonna be coming, and we wanna make sure that we position our town to be able to take full advantage, so that we can, uh, really begin to treat people for a chronic, treatable disease, as opposed to, um, what has been in place for so long. So, I'm fully in favor.
Thank you, I, I, I'm happy that you expanded on that, so, uh, so the public can know exactly what we're doing here, and we're accepting, accepting funds, uh, for treatment, which I think is a great thing. Uh, so we have a motion that's been seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Um, liaison reports, we already did that, but I didn't get a chance to mention my liaison report, which is that, uh, tomorrow, the Upper Charles Trails Committee is gonna be.
I'm just gonna mention that, too.
Okay. It's gonna be, um, showing a presentation of the proposed plan, it's gonna be at the se, uh, senior center in, at seven o'clock.
And on HCam.
On HCam.
And it sounds like it's gonna be heated.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's gonna be the place to be.
I love when people sensationalize things.
We have two budget meetings coming up for the public to know about, two, meeting jointly with school committee appropriations on Thursday, and which, and then, um, the all-hands meeting on the thirteenth, if the public is interested.
Yep.
Um, I also, I forgot to say, when I was talking about the youth commission, um, they're doing some really wonderful work, um, that probably a lot of people know about, but maybe a lot of people don't know about, to really meet the needs of families and individuals in need, whether it's a temporary need, or sort of an ongoing, long-term need. Um, so, one of the things that, um, they talked about, I, I asked specifically if there were ways that members of the public could contribute, um, to the resources that are used for families and individuals in need, um, and they mentioned the, the emergency fund, which was, um, a really wonderful, um, startup by a couple of young people in Hopkinton, and people can look that up online, can contribute to it, and through a referral from, uh, um, an agency, families can connect to emergency funds. Um, but also, the public at large, if they're interested in supporting, they could support that fund certainly, um, but also gift cards, um, particularly at the holiday season, but all along, gifts cards for gas, groceries, um, uh, in general, would be very appreciated, and they do an awful lot of interfacing and supporting of families, um, in ways that we don't have any insight to, and the need is always there, so I just wanted to make sure.
I just have that.
Thank you. Um, future agenda items? Anyone have any? No?
Not that we prioritized our goals, it's, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Maybe not so many future items.
All right, um, anybody care?
Oh, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay.
All right, motion seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.